Star School, right off the border of the Navajo Nation. We're bringing and have brought PPEs to the school, donation from World Vision. So from World Vision to the Navajo Nation, right out to our schools, in this case charter schools, private schools, and so just showing a little support, showing a little love. Again, we brought face masks, cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, and a little bit of school supplies out to Star School. We look forward to learning more about Star School. Appreciate it here, meeting with leadership here, and they were blessed. And so we just want to continue to advocate for you all to mask up, stay safe, maintain social distancing, and as the numbers come down, we look to have consecutive days of zero cases, positives, and also zero deaths. So I appreciate all your help. So as we always do, on this day of our town hall update, I'll open up a prayer, give a short update, and then introduce Jonathan Nez, who's also out in the field today, so appreciate his leadership as well. So again, Giddy and God, we thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We open up this town hall meeting, Lord Father. We ask that you grant us your wisdom, Father. We thank you for the moisture, the animals will be blessed, and the spring planting season, Lord, will be bountiful as we harvest in the fall. So we're thankful for that, Lord. We give you this time that we can meet, be with our leaders, Lord, as they're out and about, protect them, and they're coming and then they're going. Also, Lord, be with us, and as we receive new data, new updates, Lord, from our health professionals during this virus, Lord, that we use the information and govern wisely, we lead wisely, Lord. So be with leaders, Father, President Jonathan Nez, and our team, Lord, and our 24th Nomination Council delegates, and Lord, be with the leadership here at the Star School, Lord, doing a great thing, bless them, and be in there for 106 of our little children, Father, from kindergarten, from preschool on up to eighth grade, Lord, bless them, and continue to establish their work, Lord, and expand their work, Lord, as they expand minds and give knowledge. So we thank you again for all those that we consider today, Lord. Be with the whole Navajo Nation, Father God, all of our people, Lord. Heal the land, Father, heal the people that are struggling right now, that are enduring hardship, and let us live to you for all things. So when they say these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. So we again are out in the field today. Appreciate our EPS, Leo, Marwin, and Araya helping us deliver all of these great cleaning items, everything you'll need to fight a pandemic, right? We have hand sanitizer, we have cleaning supplies that'll kill a virus up to 99%, face shields, and we also have some school supplies here. So it's a great thing coming to this school, Star School, out here. I had not heard about, to be honest, but the more I learn, the more I want to learn, and the more I want to see what we could do to continue to support them as they teach our young children, and so we appreciate it. So thanks again, I made them leave it here for 10 minutes just so we could do a little segment here. But the latest numbers here, real quick. Windows of the vaccine, and more than 1.1 million people are fully vaccinated. So we're going to help stamp out COVID-19 here in this time with all of your help, so I appreciate that. More vaccines are being made available to ages 16 and older in Arizona, and the total positive cases, 837,849 since last March. So one year, those many cases, with 605 new cases. Doing a deeper dive here into Apache County, 10,774 positive cases this whole year with two new cases, so that's looking good. Hoping for zeros. Navajo County, 15,613 cases with nine new cases to report. Coquenino County rounding out our tri-county area that touches on the Navajo Nation within northeastern Arizona and northern Arizona. Total positive cases, 16,972 with nine new cases. New Mexico, yesterday, New Mexico updated statewide COVID-19 map, shows that there are no counties in the red level, so praise the Lord. San Juan and Gallup New Mexico Counties have reached the highest level, turquoise, before the green, which means that COVID pandemic is no longer, right? So we're at the next highest level, turquoise. So continued prayers for us stamping out COVID-19. So we appreciate all of you, our Navajo citizens, for being diligent and for continuing to be safe when you get out there and travel, socially distancing, washing and sanitizing our hands. So you are all part of why these numbers are so low. Again, we appreciate you. Total positive cases in New Mexico, 190,275 this whole year with 218 new cases. San Juan County there, 13,661 this whole year with six new additional cases. And lastly rounding out the counties within northwestern New Mexico that touch the Navajo Nation. Gallup McKinley County there, 12,117 with three new cases to report. So we appreciate again you all being safe, continue to be safe there as we see the numbers decline. Utah rounding out our three states that comprise the Navajo Nation. Yesterday, Governor Spencer Cox signed a legislation deal into law, nicknamed COVID-19 Endgame, that lifts the statewide mask mandate as effective up April 10. So one day, one day soon, very soon, we're going to be also able to do that, right? But we still need our masks here on the Navajo Nation. So total positive cases, 382,733 with 562 new cases. San Juan County wrapping up southeastern portion of Utah. Total positive cases stands at 1,847, and the Utah Navajo Health System is reporting total positive cases this whole year at 1,083. So there you have it, the latest updates as of this fine day here. We are on, what day is this here, March 25th? Been a whole year and a few days here, Shidene. We continue to pray for you as a nation, your leaders continue to work hard. The new ARPA has been signed, and we're looking at, receiving a whole lot of money. And so President Nez, myself, 24th Nomination Council, will meet real soon to see what that looks like as we stamp out this virus here on the Navajo Nation. So we appreciate this, and again, continued prayers for you. I am out at Star School here, just past Loop, Arizona, where 106 Navajo students, thereabouts, we have a couple of non-Navajo, but what a blessing it is to just be able to receive World Vision donations to the Navajo Nation, out to the schools where the school and the staff are going to use it and be blessed by it. So Mr. President, we appreciate your leadership out there in the field as well. And this time, I'm going to give it to you from Day School, I'm sorry, Star School, Arizona, we'll call that that, right? So Hakuna, we love you and appreciate you all, continued prayers for you.
Our grader, our backhoe, and our skidster. We do have another, two more equipment, so add one more water truck and a chapter truck that's going to be forthcoming. So, of course. But what we have, this is not the, this is not the stopping point. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We would like to sit down with all the road entities, Apache County, DIA, Inta, to work with us, to facilitate or collaborate to where we can be able to ensure that all our road systems are maintained and for our constituents to use. That is what we're looking at. And to my honorable President, Mr. Nez Shijayas, I'm going to ask you to think about sitting having, in duck, sit down with us. Because we're a certified government chapter, and we would like to go into agreement. We've been trying to work ourselves with some of the departments under the division to go into an agreement to where we can take over some of the functions that your division are undertaking. And that's where we run into problems. And that's where our council delegate, Shijayas, that's where she comes in too. She needs to, we need to work together to where any obstacle that we encounter, legislation wise, we need to overcome, and see how we can look at those limitations to enable us to do some of the things that we would like to do as a certified chapter. And then lastly, I would like to thank the 24th Navajo Nation Council for facilitating, for us to use the Shisun Fund to be able to purchase these equipment. And then I also like to thank the Department, CPMD, Mr. Johnson, Elmer Johnson, pardon my, this is him. And then also, I know these purchases would not have happened if it weren't for the staff at CPMD. When I say staff, I'm talking about your accountant and those people that push the paperwork. I'd like to specifically thank Margaret McGee, one of your employees. I know she really pushed this paperwork for us to get these equipment. So thank, I tell her, I said, "Thank you." And I really do appreciate her work. And then for to the Four Rivers representatives, thank you for working with us to make sure that we got what we needed and all the attachments. Thank you for working with us. The other, OMP, OOC, all the Navajo Nation divisions. And then lastly, I'd like to thank my staff, my chapter manager, my administrative assistant, Lirinda, Kevin, and Garrett. Where are you at? We're back there. These four are administrative staff, and they put in a lot of time and hours to make sure that we meet all the deadlines, make sure, make sure that what we needed was put on paper in the Forward, Two, Three Rivers, and then from there facilitate the Mr. Big Jaffe for Elmer and company. So, eh de yada, keh anke de di shne, so eh, yado keh, fang fang, nai yani, o, kispa losanke. Akun da shee, yako do, Shijayas, be de shna do, shee hee ta de la. Shijayas, ipa wai de shna, kimi, yado, for honorable Navajo Nation President Jonathan Nez. Yate do, keh, James, President Ali, and kahat aso, teki yate. I know it's a little chilly, but as I was sitting here looking at the view, the beautiful view that you all wake up to every day, it's very, very scenic here. You all are blessed to have the mountains and also the sand rock sculpted bridges in your community. So yate, keh, ne, do, de, chee ya, padosh de, sheen shon ta ne, suni, basi shi chin. Aro, kwe de chin, de shi chin, kwe de chin, de shon ga le. Aro, aro, te, ne, ke, na, teki, be ne, be ke, yapo ka, do, da ishna, shagin. Ke do yate, te, ne, ke, ne, do, ke, kou, chap, de, ane, ne, ke, koe de, ne, do, le, ke kou. Ke na, kani, ne, ke, ha, zi, do, tsurizze, be ha, zi. Kedi, ye, ne, ya, kou, tsurizze, na, ilah, ya, ngai, ilah. Aro, ne, ke, de, tsu, ke, kou, ke, bi, kou, ne, chede, tsu. Da hasni, kou, ne, ke, ne, pa. Eh, ba, ba, keh, ni, zeh, do, ne, ba, shni, o, be de shne, kou, do, shik, e, no, shini. Aro, na, ke, jido, de, jin, da, ne, shone, ro, ne, ne, ke, kou, de, ni. So eh, shee do, ban, da, ban, ah, de, ke, eh, ade, da ish, sa, ade, be ne, be ke, yapo ka, ni, kus, tska, ki. Na, st, eh, tsar, ke, ju, ban, da, hui, meh, di, kou, ne, ke, ne, de, do, tsurizze, de, da, ne, ki, jin, da, rish. Do, kou, ka, na, zeh, do, kha, na, cha, ki, do, ba, keh, pech, pa, san, do, pech. Member, prari, keh, la, aro, na, ti, pech, pa, san, ha, da, na, ha, zha, ne, ki. Eh, do, chi, kou, ke, de, ne, ki, ro, de, ni, chen. Aro, aro, da, shi, ki, koe, sen, ta, ki, do, kou, kin, do, na, ne, shi, ki, ne, ki, do. Ke, ne, ke, ne, ban, da, shi, ki, ne, ke, do, ke, ke, tsu, do, eh, na, shos, hada, do, shla. Aro, ne, ke, pech, pa, san, be, ke, koe, da, shla. Aro, pech, pa, san, eh, tsu, ha, zan, je, eh, ya, go, na, shos, eh, koe, da, ke, ke, da, yila. Aro, kou, tsu, de, de, ne, ne, ke, Dr. Pearl, yo, ne, fe, de, eh, si, zi, do, eh, shee do, ne, ke, ha, zi, do, le. Doctor Pearlia Fowler, of the Division of Human Resources. Eh, gand, da, zeh, shen, be, ne, chen, na, shos, ne, ke, ke, da, ya, aro, hadi, ya, aro, pech, pa, san, eh, be, ke, koe, ya, ya, da, da, si, aro, ne, ke, shi, na, be. Vice President Lyzer, ne, ke, je, vek, la, ilia. Ota, eh, be, haz, ah, ni, sli, aro, hadi, na, da, ya, kou, tsurizze, eh, ne, ke, da, ya. Ke, na, tsu, zim, be, na, st, eh, ni, ka. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are on Facebook Live right now. The reason why we're on live is, you know, we're trying to juggle a lot of events. I know the viewers are wondering what's going on in Cove, Arizona. We do updates Tuesdays and Thursdays regarding COVID-19. So today, Thursday, this event and our update, same time. But you know what? We can make it work, right? Because the Navajo people are to be commended, and the local chapters also to be commended for doing their hard work, getting the information together, packaged up, given to their delegates. And that is the reason why over $24 million from the CSN Fund was utilized to buy equipment for communities. You got a raider parked here, you got a backhoe behind us, and a little bobcat there, and other equipment that are going to be purchased for the communities, for their needs during this time. But Eli, if you got the slide, go to the first slide. Just wanted to get a quick update. I'm sure the folks here would like that update as well. Overall, 252,226 of our Navajo people have caught COVID-19 since the start. Last week, we remembered those that we've lost, right? And to this day, 1,235 of our Navajo people have gone back to the Lord, have gone back to the Creator. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the families who've lost loved ones. But we also need to remember, and we also should remind ourselves of the resilience of our people. And I want to commend each and every one of you throughout the Navajo Nation here in Cove, Arizona, for the hard work, the chapter official, the administration. We've been here many times. Delegate Pradi has been here handing out food and supplies to chapter staff, chapter leadership here so that we can keep our Navajo people home. And because of your hard work, Navajo people, folks here in Cove community managed to bring those numbers down. The second slide there shows the progression since day one of the virus here. We went through two waves here on the Navajo Nation, right? One of the biggest wave we had was during the holiday season. Well, you know what? This country has gone through three waves. And so the Creator has blessed us and made sure that we are able to work together to get through these difficult times. And we thank God, our Creator, for assisting us and getting through this pandemic. But it's not over yet, right? We're all wearing masks, even though many of us have probably had shots, maybe two shots already. Even though CDC right now is telling us, you don't have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated, right? I said, "No way, we're going to, we're going to stay with the old CDC guidelines. We're going to wear masks all the time." Remember, they even said, "You don't have to be six feet, now it's three feet." I said, "No, we're going to do two sheep lengths," right? We're going to kiss you the ben, zan, che, eh, ke, kou, da. Maybe you guys are getting hungry now, I better stop saying sheep. Number three, I know Navajo people, the third slide there says, they wanted to know what was the progression. So from January 1st to today, we show you a daily count of cases, and it's pretty high. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, you all know, on Monday, you know, last week, we had a day of prayer of unity, remember, on Friday? Where Deb Haaland spoke to us, I read a letter from the President of the United States, the First Lady of the United States. Prayers do work, ladies and gentlemen. Because on Monday, what happened? Zero cases and zero deaths. And that is because of each and every one of you following through those, following those protocols that we put in place. I know some people get tired of it. So we don't want to stay home, we don't want to wear masks, but here on the Navajo Nation, guess what? We think about the greater good. It's not about ourselves, right? It's about our families, it's about our communities, and it's about our nation. And it's because of that, you Navajo people have managed to bring the virus down to where it is today. And the fourth slide just gives you an update, a comparison with the United States and the Navajo Nation in terms of the vaccination summons. 238,085 doses have come to the Navajo Nation. Some of those have gone into your arms here in Cove, Arizona. 196,902 have been given. That is 82.7% that has been administered here on the Navajo Nation. Compare that to other states throughout the country. They're still at 30%, 20%, and here on the Navajo Nation, we have been giving out a lot of doses. 80,755 of us have been fully vaccinated. How many of you, if you want to share, you can raise your hand. If not, you don't have to. How many of you have gotten two shots so far? All right, including myself. Congratulations, give yourselves a round of applause. And you know what? And then later on, they give us the Johnson and Johnson where it's only one shot, huh? So we should have waited for, no, just kidding. But appreciate everybody. And we're on the software opening, we're going to be reevaluating the orange, maybe going to yellow sometime soon, where 50% of the occupancy will be in our businesses. So we're working with the council on re-establishing or re-evaluating some of these resolutions here on the Navajo Nation, including school reopenings. The only thing about school reopenings, as you all know, is that our kids aren't vaccinated, huh? That's the difference. And so that's why there's a concern, and we're holding schools accountable for these reopening measures so that these spreads don't happen in school. So I just wanted to give you all that update, real quick. Thank you for your patience. And now I want to go into talking about what we're here today for in Cove, Arizona, is to celebrate today's heavy equipment being delivered. We were in Rock Point earlier, and you all are the second community to get their heavy equipment in this short amount of time, so congratulations. And I thought James was going to, when he was talking to me, I thought James was going to tell me, jump in one of the...
I just wanted to say thank you for being on the call. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we are still in an orange phase and ready to move to a yellow phase soon. So I just want to congratulate all the work that you have done as our Dine people here, sik, edo, se, dene, shi. Eh, yahan, ke, di, ni, do, jodi, ha, shi, zat, ke, koi, di. De, kosh, in, sa, ki, na, st, eh, ta, ta, hali, ni, koi, di. Ya, da, go, is, ke, lo, de, ni, sun. Be, ne, na, te, shi, koi, di, an, he, koi, di, es, ka, nde, che, ha, do, a, ta, ta, hali, ya, shi, be, na. Koi, di, an, hun, za, ho, jis. Um, di, te, shi, de, koi, o, shi, so, ha, da, st, she, eh, Dr. Jill, Jimmy, and she, eh, do. I'm the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health and also working in response to the Health Command Operations Center here under the Department, working with Indian Health Service, the 638 Associations, and all the other departments. So with that, we are often continuing to operate and continue to work with all the different sectors with the Navajo Nation to ensure that they follow the public health emergency orders. I know that everyone wants to come back to normal, but there is no new, there is no old normal, there's a new normal that we will continue to face because we don't know when this pandemic is going to end. So we encourage everyone to continue to wear your mask, make sure you follow CDC guidelines also. That includes physical distancing, six feet or more as well, and also wearing the new recommended mask, wearing a tight-fitted mask or double masking or some other sort of mask that is, can have both a disposable mask and a cloth mask. or some other sort of mask that is, can have both a disposable mask and a cloth mask. Also, continue to wash your hands and clean and disinfect how you touch surface areas as well. Another area that we want to continue to have everyone do is to understand that you still need to get tested if you're showing symptoms. You might not know if it's COVID or it could be a cold or allergies, but we know we've been seeing less COVID tests being conducted in the Navajo Nation, like we like that everywhere. But maybe there are less people that are sick out there. But if you are experiencing symptoms, please get tested. And it's very important because you're not sure if you're exposed to COVID or not. So you might not have symptoms, which they call asymptomatic, but just continue to take precautions by getting tested. Also, if you haven't been vaccinated, or if you know of someone that hasn't been vaccinated, help that person if they're interested in getting vaccinated. It's still very important. There are different terminology out there that people are using now. Instead of using the word vaccine hesitancy, there is now terms like vaccine confidence. Some people might think that the vaccine might not help them or they don't, or they think it's okay because others are vaccinated, or they might not have access. So I think they might not be hesitant. They just might have other barriers to getting vaccinated. So a lot of that might be around just being aware of where to get a vaccine, how to get a vaccine, and then having someone explain to you the benefits of getting a vaccine if you're not comfortable or may not have enough information to make a decision for yourself to get vaccinated or for your elder mother, grandmother, or mother-in-law, any relative that you can think of that could be high-risk. And right now, under the vaccine prioritization, we're in phase two right now. And so that means we're, have gone past essential infrastructure, essential employees, all the frontline workers. So if those individuals, if you haven't been vaccinated, see if you can still do that. But otherwise, we're expanding our group to other individuals that weren't in those other phases. So the benefits of vaccine is basically to protect yourself, others, and also from getting really sick if you do get COVID. Eventually, you could still get COVID with the vaccine, but you may not experience high illness or severe illness. The vaccines are effective against hospitalizations as well. So just know that it is effective in that manner. Also, it helps you protect other people around you, especially those that are older and high-risk, as I mentioned. And also, you can't get COVID from the vaccine. The vaccine does not have the virus that causes COVID-19. And sometimes getting COVID-19 vaccine can cause symptoms. So you will experience symptoms such as body aches or headaches, things like that. But they'll eventually go away in a day or two. And this is quite normal because your body is building up to immunity, so you'll be fine. Some reasons to get vaccinated, like I mentioned, is to protect others, build your own immunity, and help stop the virus. So getting vaccinated will help any additional mutations of the virus so that you can protect our community from any new progression of other variants that are, that could be a threat to us. So getting vaccinated when it is available to you, so it's available almost to everybody now, but continue to wear your mask and other precautions. As I mentioned about the cloth mask over a medical procedure mask or a medical procedure with knotted ear loops and sides are good examples. Also, continue to avoid large gatherings. Public Health Emergency Order 6 does say state gathering of 10 persons or less. These are for examples in public or indoor/outdoor settings. Make sure if you're indoor that it's well-ventilated. Also, that you are at your workplace, protect yourself, especially if you know that you're experiencing sickness, please stay home. Anyone that's sick shouldn't go to work, do errands or anything. Make sure you don't have any symptoms when you go about to get tested. Make sure you don't have COVID. Also, for businesses, it's also important that if you do experience an exposure, at the case, report it to the Department of Health webpage to make sure that the business follows any kind of regulations regarding food or institutional regulations regarding safety. So that's why it's important that those cases are also help trigger our collaboration with the different regulatory entities on the Navajo Nation and also with contact tracing as well. So those are ways that this portal is helpful. And it also makes sure that there are proper recommendations on isolation and quarantine that are given to the company, the business, or either a school or tribal health program are all recommended. And now in the public health order, one of them does state that they have to report to the portal if there is any exposure. In regards to the pandemic going on this long, as we are seeing good numbers, there were some continued ways to relieve stress is taking care of yourself by exercising, eating healthy, getting enough sleep, avoiding alcohol use and drugs. Also, consider other ways to communicate with family. And that's very important to stay connected for your own mental well-being. And the safest place is at home. And I did hear, like, I think on the comments on the last town hall, like, there are, their restrictions are being lifted. But we also encourage individuals to take responsibility in making those decisions to stay home. So staying home is the safest place because you have less risk and exposure if you're at home and you take all the precautions, you have less visitors and whatnot. And so the safest place is always at home to reduce transmission. The pandemic is not over, it's still here. So continue to practice all of those precautions. So as we move forward and continuing to lift restrictions, we do ensure that it is now up to our own people to decide on how to take on those responsibilities of moving it around and about for necessary travel and whatnot. So I just want to thank everyone again. And now I'm going to introduce Captain Johnson with the Navajo Area Access Office. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. It's good to be on the Facebook Live session again. And this seems like Tuesday was here just a couple of hours ago, and here we are on Thursday morning. So again, this is Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director at Navajo Area Indian Health Service. I work beside Ms. Rosalind So as the Area Director, along with Dr. Christiansen, our Chief Medical Officer, and of course, our other executive leadership team at Navajo Area Office in St. Michael's, Arizona. Just wanted to make a few comments today. And specifically, just wanted to mention, again, here we are on March 25th. It's been certainly a long pandemic, as we all know. And right now, the signs are looking very positive. But we know that we need to remain cautiously optimistic, meaning we really need to make sure that we're still taking measures to protect ourselves in the event that we see additional cases. There's still opportunity for cases to continue. And we want to make sure that we are sharing information, that we're being transparent with the public about the status of things in terms of COVID-19, the number of cases we're seeing, and any other changes that might be happening, just so we're all on the same page moving forward and doing what we can to protect our friends and family. You know, we've talked on many occasions, and we've had our Dr. Va from our Chin Lee Service Unit and some others, Dr. Laura Hammett and others, who have done, provided what they refer to as gating measure presentations here on this Facebook Live, as well as other phone calls and other venues. And it's, when we talk about gating measures, we're really talking about the things that public health officials are tracking to make sure that we understand how things are going in our communities locally, specifically here on the Navajo Nation. We are very interested in directly on the Navajo Nation, as well as being interested in knowing what's going on in border towns, as well as border states. Because of this disease agent can move fairly rapidly once an outbreak begins to happen. And so we've been, of course, continuing to, as Dr. Jim mentioned, we continue to monitor the number of cases that are happening. We look at the infection rate between individuals here on the Navajo Nation, as well as hospital bed capacities. We talk about intensive care, we talk about our inpatient beds at all of our hospital facilities on the Navajo. And then, of course, we look at vaccines and how we're doing with those percentages, the number that have been administered or at least initiated here on the nation. And so we do watch those numbers very closely. As Dr. Jim indicated, as well as others, we are presently in an orange phase, which is definitely, it was an improvement in terms of phase. When we talk about the color code of phases, we were previously at red, and now we're at orange. And we are meeting the criteria for yellow. But before we go to yellow, we're making sure that we're, again, looking at all of our numbers, all of our metrics that we're following to make sure that we're safe when we say, you know, once we do enter into the yellow phase officially. And hopefully, that will be, that will happen. And overall, we've seen a 14-day downward trend in terms of the number of new cases. So that's very, very positive. And we've also seen in terms of infection rate that that has gone down as well. That's increased, which is a very positive sign. In terms of new cases, you'll oftentimes hear the public health officials, whether they're doctors or epidemiologists or others, they'll refer to the incidence of COVID-19 on the Navajo Nation. And when you hear the word incidence, what that refers to is the number of new cases that we're seeing. And so we know that some of the later, some of the more recent measures in terms of new cases, that between March 12th to March 18th, we've seen this, again, a downward trajectory in terms of the number of cases. And we, over that seven-day timeframe, we saw an average of 49 cases. Again, which is a good sign, but I think we all need to understand that that means there are cases still occurring. There's still new cases occurring on the Navajo Nation. But we do see that the numbers of those are continuing to trend downward. And that's a very positive thing. But if we don't keep up our guard, if we don't do the things that we need to be doing that we know now that we need to do, for example, wearing a mask, as has been stated multiple times in this particular Facebook session, when we talk about keeping our distance and washing our hands, it's so critically important at this time. Okay? So again, everything, it's looking positive, and we need to remain positive. But we also need to be doing the things that are responsible so that we're protecting our family members, we're protecting, you know, our friends, our colleagues. Because if more, if one of us contracts COVID-19, as we know, it can spread and transmit to another person rather quickly. So we just need to make sure we're doing, again, what we can do. One of the things that we've seen for sure is the number of COVID-19 tests that have been done over a period of time. That has been trending downward as well. So we're, the number of COVID-19 tests at all of our healthcare facilities, we're seeing a decrease in the number of tests. And that makes sense to some degree because since we're seeing less number of cases, we would probably anticipate that there may be less testing done. But I think Dr. Jim hit on a very, very important note, which was that if you have symptoms or if you even question for one reason or another that you may have COVID-19, we do highly encourage folks to go get tested. It's, we are still doing tested, we will, or I'm sorry, we are still doing testing, and we will continue to do testing until further notice. We're not going to stop testing. And that service is still available at your respective health facility that you typically receive care at. And so again, if you ever have questions about whether or not you might have been exposed and you might be showing some symptoms, or you have some concerns and you feel like you need to be tested, please do. We are asking you to continue to do that. I say that because it's very important from a public health standpoint that we understand exactly where we're at in terms of the number of cases here on the Navajo Nation. If no one gets tested, then we will not be able to say with any degree of certainty where we stand with our positives or our positive cases here on the Navajo Nation. We still need to understand, are we getting individuals tested? Are they testing negative or are they testing positive? And if we see an increase, maybe it's in a certain area of the Navajo Nation, maybe it's on the north side or maybe the south side. And we start seeing an increasing number of cases, that helps us understand that we need to move quickly to address those cases and to provide the assistance needed, if it's isolation services or other, or those individuals in that area. We want to stop that spread immediately. It's so important. And so that's why we have so many, we have contact tracers. These are individuals who reach out to the public whenever you test positive. And they find out who all you've been in contact with, and they help identify and make sure that we communicate with those who may have been exposed. They play such a critical role in this type of an outbreak. If it wasn't for the contact tracers, then we would never stop the spread. It would just be continual. So I want to give a big shout out to anyone and everyone here on the nation that has served in that capacity over the last year. Again, the contact tracers, whether you're working for a state program or you're working at the national level or here on the Navajo Nation, critical, critical to stopping the spread here on the Navajo Nation. Just want to also make a quick mention that, again, another positive sign that we're seeing is in the states that surround us, whether we're talking about Oklahoma, Texas, and Colorado, where there's still a risk of outbreak given their current status. And so those are being monitored very closely. Then when we talk about New Mexico and Arizona as states, you know, they're showing slow disease growth in terms of COVID-19, slow disease spread, which is very, very positive. But again, we have to make sure we're doing the right things to keep it in that phase. One of the other things I'll mention, and it's been talked about over time, but I think it's always worth mentioning here because I know there's lots of concerns about it. And that is related to the various strains of COVID, the mutations. And, you know, I know that there's been a lot of concern and it continues to be, whether we're talking about the South African strain, or the California strain, or the United Kingdom strain. There's been lots of interest in that area because that may help tell us where we're going to be going in the future. And I want to thank the Navajo Nation. They've been very helpful with us in terms of the Indian Health Service in setting up, monitoring where we provide samples to a vendor who is specifically checking for some of these different strains. And that is, again, it's just similar to the contact tracers I was mentioning earlier, very critical to stopping the spread. So that if we do see a new strain starting to spread here, again, very important that we're able to address that quickly. Time is of the essence in these types of situations. Uh, time is of the essence in these types of situations so that um we can uh stop or halt the transmission here on the Navajo Nation. Um, I always like to take a moment and mention that, you know, the number of vaccinations that um COVID-19 vaccinations that we've seen uh here on the Navajo Nation with all of our tribal health organizations and our IHSS uh federal uh facilities and all the good work that's gone into that. And I just want to say thank you across the Navajo Nation to whether you're a, whether you're a nurse, whether um that, that's helped with COVID-19 vaccinations, whether you're a, a housekeeper that may be helped uh with the drive-through clinics and helped in terms of helping with uh parking vehicles or directing traffic or providing safety uh during these events. Um, I just want to say thank you to all of those who've been out in the elements over the, over the wintertime. Um, it wasn't easy, it hasn't been easy. Uh, and, and I was so, so proud of the work that's been done, uh even when it's snowing, uh raining uh and outside, uh, uh I guess standing beside vehicles, uh helping people get their vaccinations. So a tremendous job. But we've uh, you know, we've reached right at 197,000 and we're, we're over that at this point uh here on the Navajo Nation. So um excellent job in terms of the numbers of vaccinations that's been provided. Um, I also just want to mention, as I did um on Tuesday, the, the IHSS at a national level has set a goal of uh vaccinating 1 million people, 1 million Native Americans by the end of um this month, by the end of March. And so we know that we're well on our way. Uh, we're, we're over 815,000 uh that, that we're aware of. And so uh we're looking forward to reaching that 1 million uh doses of vacs, of uh administered vaccine uh shortly, whenever we reach the end of this month. So um we continue to be uh in the top 20% when we talk, when we look across the board nationally at states and other jurisdictions in terms of our numbers of vaccinations that we're doing. So we continue to perform well. Um, any vaccine that we receive, we are um getting that out to the public as quick as we can. We continue to maintain a uh back, a COVID-19 vaccine schedule in the various communities and service areas. And that includes again, all the federal and, and uh tribally managed uh facilities across the Navajo Nation. And we will continue to do that. So uh again, thank you and your families for showing up and participating and uh being kind uh and as, as we had to wait patiently uh to get all the traffic through some of these testing clinics. We appreciate uh you for that and for uh taking the time to make sure that your family's safe by uh joining our uh vaccine clinics. Um, a, again, I just want to remind everyone to, to stay vigilant. Please do not let down your guard. I know it would be easy right now to say I'm, you know, I'm not going to wear a mask or I'm not going to worry about wearing a mask when I, when I, when I go certain places. And um that is not advised. We, we continue to advise, please wear your mask. We're at a point where we fought and we fought and we have fought. And uh we've all sacrificed. And we do not want to allow this um bug to pop back up and begin spreading again um as we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to protect all our friends, neighbors, family uh and, and colleagues. Um, so what I would also just like to say is uh as we come forward to an end, uh we continue to be thankful uh for uh US Congress and uh the White House and uh Department of Health Human Services who have been very um helpful in terms of the funding to support many of the activities and efforts and the public health outreach that has been able to be accomplished. And uh I won't go into the specific numbers, but it has been imperative in, in this particular outbreak that if we were not funded at a higher level, um that could have posed many, many, many serious challenges. And so we're just thankful for um the funding that we've been provided and um, and, and hopefully we'll continue to move forward. You know, within uh, I know within the Indian Health Service and within the tribally uh managed health facilities, we're all looking at things uh in terms of returning as much as we can back to normal operations to maybe all the different clinics and things that you might be used to at our facilities. And as you're aware, we had to close many of those during the epidemic to protect uh anyone uh entering the facilities from an infection control uh perspective. But we are working uh towards uh opening many of our clinics and we're doing that in a carefully measured way. And um we'll continue to open up and share information with uh all of our patients, getting information out through this venue as well as other, maybe radio uh commercials or radio shows as well, just to make sure that folks have an idea of uh what's going on at the various healthcare facilities across the Navajo Nation. So with that said, um I'm going to go ahead and, and, and sign off here. And I know Dr. Fowler was onsite with President Nez. She typically ends our uh broadcast on Facebook Live. But um she's onsite uh out in the field. So uh for today, uh we'll go ahead and end here. And I just want to say uh thank you to the uh public, for the general audience for joining today. And we will continue to keep you uh updated with the latest.